I'll call to order the May 24th, 2018 business meeting and ask County Administrator Don Crupp to please take the role.
Well, good morning Commissioners, I am back from a lovely two-week vacation. My wife and I were celebrating our 40th anniversary by tooling down the, well, actually, chateau hopping and wine tasting in the Burgundy area of France. We had a lovely time, so, but I'm glad to be back. I want to introduce Amanda Keller, who's Assistant County Council here, representing County Council, and of course, we have Mary Rathke serving as clerk to the board this morning. I will start with Commissioner Humberson with the role.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Chair Bernard.
Here. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And thank you, Don, for mentioning your vacation, making us all feel bad.
I came back and I had the best blood pressure reading I've had in years.
Oh, well, we can change that.
Just give us five minutes.
Okay, it's already started. So, shall I introduce the first item then?
Please.
All right, so the first item is a board action item. This involves Business and Community Services. It is a consideration of approval of a fair management agreement between Clackamas County and the Clackamas County Fair Board. We have Director of Business and Community Services Laura Zentner here to present this item to you.
Good morning, Chair Bernard and Commissioners, I'm Laura Zentner, the Director of Business and Community Services. Today, I'm here to present the fair management agreement for your approval and signature. And just by way of some background, the county owns the land and all the structures located at the fair and event center. With that comes the liability related to those assets. The fair board, per Oregon Revised Statute, has full management responsibility for the operations of the fair and event center, and this includes year-round programming and operations. In addition, the fair and event center employees are not county employees and the executive director reports directly to the fair board. The budget is a part of the Clackamas County budget and runs through the Business and Community Services Department. This structure results in a separation between ownership of assets and management of the fairgrounds, and it has created challenges in the long-term planning of the facility and management of the capital assets. The challenges related to this structure were highlighted in late 2014 when a critical capital asset had to be demolished in the weeks leading up to the fair. Since late 2014, the Board of County Commissioners, Business and Community Services staff, County Administration staff, and fair board members and staff have discussed several governance options. Ultimately, we agreed to leave the governance structure as is. This structure, though, has made it necessary to craft an agreement between the two parties, and this agreement basically clarifies the rules, policies, and procedures to be used in conducting county fair business, and the agreement also provides protection for the county and the BCC from liability related to the personnel and contractual matters related to the management of the fair and event center. So with that, staff recommends the BCC approve the agreement between Clackamas County and the fair board. And in closing, I want to thank the Commissioners, the fair board members, County Council, and staff from both organizations. This has truly been a team effort, and I'm very excited about the resolution and look forward to working together in the future. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chair Bernard and the Commissioners for further discussion and comments.
First thing, I'd like to comment, congratulations on your directorship of Business and Community Services.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. And also, I had some talking points, but I thought it more appropriate that the liaison to the fair board and the person who has been working on this diligently have the opportunity to address some of the issues today. So Ken, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today, the Board of County Commissioners is happy to come to a lasting agreement with the fair board. This agreement settles an issue that has percolated for years. Both parties can now move forward with clarity which our public deserves. The real and very lasting results of this action are future cooperation and camaraderie. Much like the Stafford Land Use Agreement or the Oak, excuse me, the Gladstone Oak Grove Library issue, the parties have come together to recognize and work through their differences. This kind of joint effort is what our residents and fairgoers deserve and expect. We cannot let bureaucracy stand in the way of delivering good service and reaching amicable solutions that are in the best interest of the public. Everyone involved in this resolution, Commissioners, fair board members, and staff for both organizations, should take pride in their efforts that have made this day possible. One of our strategic priorities is to build public trust through good government. This action does just that. Thank you again to all those that are involved. This is how county government should work. Thank you.
Are there any clarifying questions? Comment?
Yeah.
Yes?
I don't have a question. I just want to say that is the newest Commissioner, although I don't feel new anymore because I'm almost a year and a half in this role, but the way that this has been facilitated from my perspective has been very positive. I so appreciated the joint meeting that we had with the fair board. That was wonderful to build those relationships, and I just want to give an extra appreciation to Commissioner Humberson, who's just been steadfast and diligent in being our liaison, keeping us informed, and there weren't any surprises through this process in that we were resolving issues, and from my perspective, kudos to our staff, kudos to all those involved, and this is a real success.
Great. Ken?
Paul. I too would like to just extend my appreciation to all the fair board members and Commissioner Humberson for their tenacious work on this, getting us to where we are today, so, thank you. Thank you all.
Ken?
I want to mention two of our, sorry about that, Jim, playing with the buttons. I'd like to mention two of the fair board members in particular, Gary Linton and Ted Coons, the past president and the current president. They were patient also. They put a lot of their own time, energy, and effort into negotiating this thing. They were also, Gary in particular, was a very good advocate for his board in terms of making sure that what was important to his board was in this agreement. So, kudos to them also. This was a team effort, and it just wouldn't have happened without willingness to just sit down and work it out, so, thank you both.
So, would you be interested in making a motion?
I would, Mr. Chairman. I move we approve the fair management agreement between Clackamas County and the Clackamas County Fair Board.
Second?
I moved in second that we approve the fair management agreement between Clackamas County and the Clackamas County Fair Board. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. So, you and I are going to sign it, and then after that, you're all coming up and you're going around, we're going to take a photo. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one last one. One, two, three. Thank you very much. That was it. All right. One, two, three.[884.04]
You know, to take up the challenge. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you.
Do you have any questions before I go on to the awards?
Any questions? No, go ahead.
Good. So, I will, can I have the clicker? I will, I will note, actually, there is a video that we'll send the link to. We didn't want to take up too much more time that I think is a really powerful video about starting to see seniors, so just to highlight Elisa's comment. So, I want to take a few moments to honor our Superheart Heroes. We did something a little different this year. We actually pushed out the request to nominate in four categories and received over 25 nominations of community members, neighbors, friends, employees. So, we're very excited. So, I'm going to take a moment and sort of go through all four categories. And as I read the recipient's name, if you can come up here and just stand, if I can ask people to hold applause till the end so we can get through them. As folks are walking up, I'll read a few sentences about why these individuals were nominated. So, our first, oops, hang on. So, our first award is the Ambassador Award, which recognizes an individual, family, or small group who has raised awareness of behavioral health issues, initiated projects with a lasting impact, and/or influence systems or policy change. So, our first recipient, let me see if I'm clicking here correctly, is Sherri Conrad Hirsch. Sherri has created a presentation called Inner Generational Healing and has spoken at the Oregon City Family Focus Forum for the past two years. She is changing the message about generational abuse and giving parents a voice. Our second awardee is Mary Ellen Winterhalter. Mary Ellen, gosh, I can't, my clicker doesn't want to work. Mary Ellen has built the kind of trust with her students that they call her when they are in need. We saw her save a life earlier this year when a student was considering suicide, but, and Mary Ellen made sure that this individual got to a safe place and received mental health support. Dave Kidd is here. He works with a group of volunteers that provide ham radio services for Clackamas County. Dave has worked with individuals that have a variety of behavioral health needs and has went out, has gone out of his way to help them connect to services. Our next group is the Superheart Partner Award, which recognizes an organization, business, or institution that has implemented innovative behavioral health programs and/or policies that positively affect the emotional well-being of employees and the greater community. And our first recipient is Hoodland Senior Center, and Ella Vogel will be accepting this award on behalf of her and another individual who both love their jobs because they love the, they love the community that they serve. They are the unsung heroes. One time, somebody reads about and are well-loved at the center. These are direct quotes, as you can see. And our next recipient, we just have one other here, is North Clackamas School District Elementary Programs. And Karen Rushes is accepting this award on behalf of her colleagues, who also include Kalia Williams Rodriguez, Jen Kiltlow, and Linda Westling. And through the Social Emotional Learning Initiative, North Clackamas School District is leading innovative and trauma-informed approaches to supporting young children in elementary schools. They're forging a critical path for young children and their families in Clackamas County to find hope and healing from the moment they begin kindergarten. We need that. Our next award is the Superheart Neighbor Award, and this recognizes a unique individual or family who promotes hope and healing through ordinary acts of kindness and compassion. Our first recipient is Shayla Montgomery. And Shayla has turned her personal story of being bullied, which turned to self-harm, to starting the Stand Up Campaign, where she goes to schools, speaking in classrooms and/or assemblies, community groups and mentors, and mentors one-on-one on how to recognize and stand up against bullying. And our other recipient is Kevin R. Mitchell. Kevin, this is a really powerful story, I want to say, and his family is here in the, in the audience. Kevin has saved my life and the life of our daughter, Roanna, working 50-hour weeks and still having to do everything from grocery shopping to picking up prescriptions and helping all the time around the house and yard, and every morning leaving a heartfelt, happy love note for us on the counter before he goes to work. I believe you're up to over 1,800 notes or so. Is that correct, Kevin? That, okay, yeah. Eight thousand notes. That's how many notes he does. So, it's pretty impressive. And our last is our Superheart Employee Award, which recognizes an exemplary Clackamas County staff member who goes above and beyond, leading with their heart to make a difference in behavioral health. Tamara Dickinson, who I would also say is an unsung hero for here in Clackamas County. She's responsible for leading our wellness programs at the county with her whole heart. She is always thinking, always looking for new approaches, always looking for ways to help our employees be healthier and happier. I want to honor our mental health Superheart Heroes for May 2018. So, if we have a moment, if we could give out the awards and get a photo. Do you have any questions or comments?
I'd just like to comment, you know, the, this is a big county. A lot of people need help and service, and we could never do it without folks like you and the volunteers of the many committees we have who really care. Like us, we care about our community a lot, or we wouldn't be here, and we couldn't do it without you. So, thank you very much for all you do and the heart you give to our community. So, thank you very much. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's all Jim.
So, are we going to do this?
Yeah, we could do a photo, but we'll get out.
Okay.
All right, if I could get you all to scoot in a little bit on, on this side. Sorry. All right. Thank you.
Well, the next item on the agenda is citizen communication, and we have Les Poole. Please join us.
Good morning. Les Poole from Gladstone. They're leaving. I'll say no more. I picked up a button on the way in. It says, "Ask the Question." They're out front. How ironic. Mr. Ask Your Question has picked up a little button that you're giving away that says, "Ask the Question." And I encourage people to do that. No trick questions, no, no little cute questions to make the commissioners look bad. The genuine questions that matter to everyone. And I encourage folks to not only ask reasonable questions, but to expect answers. And in the time that I've been coming, we see more answers in Clackamas County than we did years ago, and we certainly see more answers here than we do in a lot of other jurisdictions. I wish I had time to talk about the mental health issue, but I'll just say one thing. I read something up there, and an award was given for this, and we can all do it. It says, "Promote Hope and Healing Through Ordinary Acts of Kindness and Compassion." Okay, how hard is that? Pretty easy, and you, and you don't even need training. You don't even need training. So, that's one we can all do. And we all know when people are alone, there's a reason. I'm not a psychiatrist, but I don't think one needs a degree to understand that when people are loners, we need to reach out to them. Couple of quick things. One is, I again want to thank Paul and, and anyone else in the county or the staff and the commissioners that have continued to show interest in, in this tolling proposal that has eliminated the original intent for the tolling study. And I can't imagine what I-205 is going to be like if they proceed with what they're planning. And we're going to have a tolling commission here that's, that's making a final recommendation to ODOT. And then by the end of the year, in time for next year's legislative session, there will be a recommendation from ODOT. And what I'm seeing out there, as I mentioned in the past, is troubling. So, by all means, the county really needs to take a position. We, we need to oppose how they're doing it. And the numbers are specious. I, I just, this is really troubling, and I know you can only do so much, but we're, we're just going to be upside down if we don't change the plan. And I think you're going to start seeing people showing up again over this. I really do. I think over the transportation issue. It was number one in the survey of citizen concerns recently in the county, and it was your own survey. So, I, I'm lost for words sometimes over this because I'm repeating myself. I'm asking for action. I'm certainly asking for action, and I'm encouraging it. Because if the citizens find out a month or two down the road that we're going to be paying for tolling, that's supposedly going to relieve traffic, it's just going to be a nightmare. And frankly, it's going to be another time when a state agency isn't going to look good because I don't think they've been very outspoken or transparent about what they're doing. So, I, I hope you just stay all over that. It's a growing concern, and, and I again encourage folks to come down and, and ask questions about it. And thank you, as always.
Thank you, and I believe, I assume our letters are public. Yeah, we, we have taken a position at least two or three times. And we also have you as a representative on that group that have stated our position many times, so we appreciate that, but go ahead.
Yeah, you bet. I'll just, I'll just briefly say that as this is taking shape, and the next meeting, we'll be having a meeting on June 20th, the commission will, and take in all the information and get a more precise response and position for the final meeting on June 25th of this me, of this stage. And there are several meetings to follow, which their public comment will be taken that ODOT will be doing from here on. So, but absolutely, it's all public, and it depends on where in the region you are, as to what your position is. I don't think it's going to be a matter of one opinion or two opinions. I think it'll be a few, at, at the very least.
No doubt. Well, hang in there. I know it's, it's, it's a lot of work.
It's been fun.
And congratulations on, on being re-elected so you can stay on top of this job and, and not have to continue campaigning. You did well. So, we assume that, that you're going to be here for life now? Is that your plan?
Not sure I can last that long.
No, we'll burn you out eventually, Paul. Thank you.
Ken.
Yeah, I just want to encourage, encourage you to go to the state and have a conversation at that level because, quite frankly, most of, most of what we're going to be able to do is, is in, in the, in the realm of recommendation. But the authority to make the final decisions on this is going to be at the state level, quite frankly. And I think people's voices are going to be better heard at, in that venue where the decision-makers can actually hear what people think. So, you might, and I'm not just talking about you, but people that you talk to, that's really where it needs to, to go.
Well, I actually think the, the media did a disservice the other day when I heard that they had decided to toll I-5. And so, I asked Paul, had they made that decision? He said, "No, they haven't made that decision." But it sure sounded like they had. Did you hear that, too? I thought it was, I thought, you know, that, that same meeting, that, that radio conversation occurred the day after or the day of that meeting you had.
Yeah, the, so the, you're exactly right. So, the, the evening of the Wednesday evening, prior to the J-PAC meeting and prior to the LTC meeting, it was, the news media was conveying that the decision's already been made, and this is what it's going to look like. And it focused on a part of Portland, I-5. And so, I, I think, actually, if you look at even what was presented recently, that there's five years at least of public input and decision-making around the tolling program. Not to say that something couldn't happen sooner. That will be interim, but I think that there'll be a lot of opportunity as this thing takes shape. And certainly, if you're in Clark County, you have one particular opinion or two, and then if you are south and all points in between, we're finding out that there's a lot of valid concerns, but they're different, you know, based on where you are geographically. More to come.
Yeah. Great. I guess you guys got all your hats ready because the next item, you're going to be changing your hat a lot, and I believe Chris Story's coming up.
Yeah, you will be changing your hats quite a bit. Yeah, Mr. Story is coming up. So, we do have three public hearings this morning. The first public hearing, you're going to be considering the second reading of an ordinance number 04-2018, adopting and ratifying amendments to the West Partnership IGA for Clackamas Service District Number One. And you will be sitting then as Clackamas Service District Number One for this first item.
So, I'll announce that the board will recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as Clackamas County Service District One for this next item. Chris.
Good morning, Commissioners. Great to be with you this morning. This series of actions that you will be considering at this meeting represents the culmination of 18 months of work at the direction of the board upon the formation of Water Environment Services as a 190 partnership to regionalize the provision of wastewater and surface water services throughout the northern portion of Clackamas County, representing the efforts that were previously undertaken by CCSD Number One, the Tri-City Service District, and the Surface Water Management Agency of Clackamas County. So, we may use acronyms as we go forward, but I wanted to throw the actual names out at the beginning. So, you are now sitting as the governing body of CCSD Number One, Clackamas County Service District Number One. And each of the three partners in the West entity are going to be considering a change to the document that formed the West entity to characterize and give direction about the manner in which the debt associated with CCSD One will be handled going forward. So, this large effort will be represented by the three public hearings that we're having, and then three board actions. And before we get too deep into it, I did want to stop and say special thank yous to Doug Watt, the Finance Manager of Wes, and Amanda Keller from County Council, who have been key members of the team in making this happen under the direction of Director Geist. So, for this first action item with the ordinance for amending this, you will see the ordinance actually has two effects. One is it adopts a change to the contract that the service districts have entered into and adopts an ordinance ratifying the adoption of that change to the contract, the amendment. And the amendment has the purpose of, one, clarifying what debt is exclusively the responsibility of CCSD One, which will also be known as Rate Zone Two within the West entity, clarifying the way some of the financial relationships will happen, affirming that transition where having Wes be the holder or manager of that debt instead of CCSD One is appropriate, and clarifying that certain actions have to be taken to demonstrate to the public that the payments for that debt, both principal and interest, are exclusively the responsibility of Rate Zone Two or CCSD One ratepayers going forward. And that is what this ordinance will do.
Ken.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to make a comment before we move forward. This is the culmination of effort, not only by staff, but I think it should be acknowledged that the board, prior to this board majority, that did not include myself and did not include Commissioner Fisher, were the ones who began this process. And it was, shall we say, contentious at that time, and it was a difficult decision for that board to make. And I think that they should be acknowledged, that they stepped up to the plate and made the kind of decision that needed to be made in spite of the difficulties politically. And this is the culmination of, of something that started back then, and they should be acknowledged for having stepped up and, and done this. So, that's all I have to say.
Yeah, and, and I wanted to ask how you noticed these meetings because where is it? Where is everybody? I, I'm, I'm, you know, this was contentious, but there's no one out here, unless Les intends on saying something, who's here to oppose what we're doing today and, and all these various things. None. So, I think it says a lot about the work you guys have been doing over the last 18 months or longer than that, that, you know, this is the right decision. It's a message to me that the audience isn't out there opposing this, that this is the right decision. So, you did some good work, Shelley and her work, introducing the community to the work you guys do. Obviously, has been success, successful. So, I want to congratulate you for that effort you've done and obvious success. So, with that, any other questions?
Just a comment. It was November or December of 2016 when we actually made that first big step.
November of 2016, November 6th.
All right, that's a meaning not to forget.
Indeed.
Well, with that, I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter. I saw that. With that, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we read the ordinance by title only.
Second.
Been moved in second that we may read the ordinance by title only. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, I'll ask clerk to read the ordinance by title only.
Okay, this is ordinance number 04-2018 of Clackamas County Service District Number One, and ordinance authorizing and ratifying an amendment of the Intergovernmental Partnership Agreement between Clackamas County Service District Number One, Surface Water Management Agency of Clackamas County, and Tri-City Service District regarding the Water Environment Services Partnership.
I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve ordinance number 04-2018, adopting and ratifying amendments to the West Partnership IGA for Clackamas County Service District Number One.
Second.
Been moved in second that we approve ordinance number 04-2018, adopting and ratifying amendments to the West Partnership IGA for Clackamas County Service District Number One. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. With that, I'll announce that the board will recess as Service District Number One and reconvene as Tri-City Service District for the next item.
Yes, so this next item is almost identical to the first item, but serving as Tri-City Service District. It's the second reading of ordinance number 05-2018, adopting and ratifying amendments to the West Partnership Tri-City Service District. Mr. Story.
Good morning, Commissioners. Great to be with you again. The only distinction I would offer, because the text is identical for all three service districts as they consider this matter, is the context for the Tri-City Service District as they would consider the matter, and you as the governing body as you consider it for them. The Tri-City Service District does not have any currently outstanding debt, and one of the key implementation portions of this process is to allow Wes to step into the shoes of CCSD One, which does have outstanding debt. That will make it administratively easier for CCSD One, now Wes, to participate in its existing debt, but Tri-City Service District and also Surface Water Management Agency of Clackamas County to benefit enormously from CCSD One's existing participation in the financial markets. As we mentioned during the first reading, we had this debt issuance evaluated, and its status was affirmed with a positive credit watch and likely upgrade upon the actions that you're considering today because the credit weight, credit rating for the regionalized approach to service is superior to going their own separate ways, which means Tri-City in the future, when needing to access capital markets, will do so at the best possible credit rating and lower interest rates for the benefits of ratepayers.
Great. With that, are, any questions of Chris? Again, I'd like to comment that what happened in late 2016 is evidence that a lot of work has taken place and that a lot of those concerns have been addressed. And, you know, I, again, I think Shelley and, and staff has done a good job communicating the value of this agreement and moving forward. So, I appreciate that this, you know, actually, I've been involved in this issue for, well, since about 2001. So, you know, this is a culmination of many years of work, many issues of concern among cities. Again, you don't see them here. And I, I think it's a proud day to move forward on this. And the next few items. So, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we read the ordinance by title only.
Second.
Been moved in second that we read the ordinance by title only. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. I'd ask the clerk, clerk to read the ordinance by title only.
Okay, this one is ordinance number 05-2018 of the Tri-City Service District, and ordinance authorizing and ratifying an amendment of the Intergovernmental Partnership Agreement between Clackamas County Service District Number One, Surface Water Management Agency of Clackamas County, and Tri-City Service District regarding the Water Environment Services Partnership.
With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve ordinance number 05-2018, adopting and ratifying amendments to the West Partnership IGA for Tri-City Service District.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve ordinance number 05-2018, adopting and ratifying the amendments to the West Partnership IGA for Tri-City Service District. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. I'd like to announce that the board will now recess as the Tri-City Service District and convene as the Surface Water Management Agency for the next items. Does this mean eventually there will be one budget committee?
As next year, you will show, there will be a single budget. So, this year, you are going through a single-budget committee process, which
Single board?
And yes, single board, single budget, single audit, single management of the efforts so we can gain those economies of scale.
Sounds like a savings there.
Substantial savings.
Yes. Done.
I would say that this is the third leg of the stool of the best thing since sliced bread.
I can tell you the history of that sliced bread story if you'd like to know it.
I bet you can.
So, but this is the second reading of ordinance number 06-2018, adopting and ratifying amendments to the West Partnership for the Surface Water Management Agency of Clackamas County.
Good morning, Commissioners. When you are sitting as the governing body of SWIMAC, we'll just try to condense it down a little bit there. SWIMAC is actually relatively small compared to the other two service districts. It focuses exclusively on surface water management services, and that allows, by joining into the partnership, to join with CCSD One's surface water program to accomplish quite a bit more. And frankly, its budget is small enough that it would not really even be able to access capital markets but for this transition. So, we feel it's a, it's a great opportunity for SWIMAC to be able to enhance the level of service it's providing in its area.
Great. Thank you. I guess I don't need to comment again on this. Congratulations, assuming that there is a motion to adopt the ordinance. Any questions? Any, is there, and I will entertain a motion.
I move we read the ordinance by title only, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we read the ordinance by title only, and I ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title only.
Mr. Chairman, we have to vote on that.
Oh, no.
We have to vote to read it by title only.
Oh, that's true.
Aye.
Three. All those, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Actually, is that correct? I thought we had already voted to read the ordinance by title only. And now, we make a motion to
Not till after she reads it by title only.
So, we're doing three different ones, so.
Yeah, I know, I know. Go ahead.
Okay, so, this one is ordinance number 06-2018 of Surface Water Management Agency of Clackamas County, and ordinance author Water Management Agency of Clackamas County, and ordinance authorizing and ratifying an amendment of the intergovernmental partnership agreement between Clackamas County Service District Number One, Surface Water Management Agency of Clackamas County, and the Tri-City Service District regarding the Water Environment Services Partnership.
So I still feel like we skipped something there, but all right. With that, I'll enter...
Yes.
No, we already voted on it, we already made the motion, and we made the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
No, we need the motion.
No?
So, so, Mr. Chair, I move we approve ordinance number zero six dash two zero one eight, adopting and ratifying amendments to the West Partnership Surface Water Management Agency of Clackamas County.
Second?
It's been moved in second that we approve ordinance number zero six dash two zero one eight, adopting the ratif- and ratifying the amendments to the West Partnership Surface Management Agency of Clackamas County. Any further discussion?
Yes, I just, meaning this is the last piece. I'm gonna, so I've been following this since 1999 and been in all kinds of different positions and meetings, and I don't, can't even imagine how many hundreds of hours I've been involved in wastewater, surface water issues. So I really think and believe, and I think all of us do, and I, very important to say that we, what we're doing here and have done has truly been in the best interest of the constituents, the ratepayers out there, and for our water quality as far as it relates to our permits and our stewardship for both the creeks and streams and the Willamette and Clackamas River. So I am very honored to be part of this commission that's taking this step here today and applaud all the work that our staff have done and prior staff and years back that have all been part of bringing us to this point today.
Great, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. With that, we'll now sit the board, they'll now recess as the Surface Water Management Agency and reconvene as the Service District Number One for the next item.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Of course, now we're operating a consideration of board discussion items, the first of which is a consideration of a board order that would adopt findings and amend the master sewer revenue bond declaration of Clackamas County Service District Number One. Mr. Story?
Good morning, Commissioners. Great to be here this morning. This is, you might say, the, the technical implementation piece of the discussion we've been having. So as Wes was formed, the various partners agreed that they would contribute their assets and operations into the Wes entities to try and gain those efficiencies, in particular the capital and regulatory efficiencies that we're anticipating. One of the key components of that is to transfer the assets from CCSD One. CCSD One, while having outstanding debt, had covenants restricting the transfer of those assets. So staff has been working on the process of conveying that so that the covenants can be complied with. We looked at several different ways, and the direction the board gave us back in May of 2017 is this process that is culminating before you today. And it allows basically Wes to step into the shoes of CCSD One and assume all those responsibilities moving forward. To do that, under the master declaration, you have to make a finding that there is no material or adverse impact from that change to the people who own the bonds, the people whom we have an obligation to pay. And so we have undertaken a fair amount of supporting research and evidence to allow you to make those determinations today, and that's what this board order does. So if you will indulge me, I will highlight the significant factors that we've prepared and attached for the public that I know that you have reviewed already. The first is, we prepared reverse financials, you might say. So the three service districts were operating separately, so we hired an outside auditing firm, Moss Adams, to come and prepare financials that retrospectively looked at the performance of the entity for five years prior, and said, what would it have looked like if Wes had already been formed five years back, and how would that have compared to the service districts operating separately? And that showed, frankly, that the organization was financially stronger, operating together than they were separately. We then commissioned a report from Donovan Enterprises that looked prospectively at what the financial future may hold for Wes. We looked at projections of rates, capital needs, operational requirements, and looked at scenarios, because again, this is the future, so we can't guarantee that's the way it's going to be, but we had some hypotheticals that we considered, and looked under four different scenarios about the manner in which they, the future may unfold, and the way the parties could operate together. And in each of those four scenarios, we found that our ratepayers were better off working together as part of Wes than CCSD One going it alone. The third component, which I know was fascinating bedside reading for you, is factual findings supporting that. So we went and did some research and analysis, looking at it from a financial, a capital, regulatory, operational perspective, and we also included, in fact, an analysis that's a bit above and beyond what was required, to look at securities law types of issues and disclosures that one would have to make to ensure that someone who's holding that debt right now, if they were looking at the transaction and trying to make an investment decision at this point, what would they want to know? So we tried to flesh out all those details for you, and for people who will be reading these reports in the securities market, because we will have to publish this after you take an action, and found that indeed, not only was there no material or adverse impact, but there was a positive impact because of the ability to repay is enhanced because of the efficiencies and savings gained by everyone working together. The fourth item is, we had the bonds and this proposed action reviewed by Standard and Poor's. We engaged them to look at the current debt and our current rating from CCSD One, which is double A plus. We presented the materials to them, the proposed actions, and the board anticipated actions today, and they found that it was actually a positive. They issued a positive credit watch, which means they, they're not going to upgrade us until we actually take the action, but they're watching us so that if we do take the action, they are quite inclined to upgrade the credit rating for the then CCSD One, soon-to-be Wes debt, from double A plus to triple A, which is the highest possible credit rating in their system. So we took that as a strong affirmation that not only is it not adverse, but it's a, quite a positive for the bondholders and for the organization as a whole. And finally, you see attached to this resolution, the amendments itself to the master declaration, which, as Wes steps into the shoes of CCSD One, means you have a structure existing so that Wes, in the future, may borrow money efficiently and effectively using these same bond covenants, having already entered into the market, already having a credit rating, and it will be a smooth transition for the operations of the entity moving forward. I'm certainly available if you have any questions about all of that.
Any questions?
I have just one ask of you, and that is, when that bond rating is increased, would you please inform us directly?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And done. Isn't the county a triple A already?
Yes.
Yeah, I thought so. That's good. Any other questions? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the board order adopting findings and amending the master sewer revenue bond declaration of Clackamas County Service District Number One.
Second?
It's been moved in second that we approve a board order adopting findings and amending the master service, I mean sewer revenue bond declaration of Clackamas County Service District Number One. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. With that, I'd like to announce that the board will recess as Service District Number One and convene as Water Environmental Services for the next two items.
Yes, so, Mr. Chair, this next item is a board order effectuating certain Wes partnership agreement provisions. Mr. Story?
Good morning, Commissioners. Just making sure you're awake. So this item, you're now acting as the Wes governing body. You've gone through the process of amending the IGAs, and part of that IG amendment authorized and indeed directed that there be additional clarification and transparency around assuring that the ratepayers of Rate Zone Two, CCSD One, will be the only parties that are paying for the debt that Wes is now going to be assuming. This board order that you see in front of you is that transparent declaration to the public about our commitment to that original sort of covenant that was part of the formation process, that while CCSD One is bringing debt to the relationship, you might say, only CCSD One ratepayers will be responsible for that. And I should clarify, when we say CCSD One, that is people served by CCSD One, so it includes our two contract customers, Milwaukee and Johnson City, as well. This order, it will use a rate-making testing methodology, so we will go and test our rate-making to ensure that it's generating sufficient revenue to exclusively pay for the debt and principal and interest for the outstanding bonds.
Great, thank you. Again, like the item before in this item, you just didn't make up some findings, you actually did an analysis, hired outside counsel that reviewed the material, and came up with the conclusion that this was a good idea, basically. Okay, with that, I'll entertain, any other questions? That'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the board order effectuating certain Wes partnership agreement provisions.
Second?
It's been moved in second that we approve a board order effectuating certain Wes partnership agreement provisions. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Yes, so the final item related to these actions is consideration of a board order accepting substitution for Clackamas County Service District Number One with respect to certain borrowings, and Mr. Story will again explain this one.
Good morning, Commissioners. I did want to highlight, to sort of pause here at the end of the process, that it's somewhat unfortunate that we didn't have a bunch of people showing up. I'm glad we didn't have the controversy, but in many ways, certainly we think our work in protecting public health and the environment is crucial in the operation of our society, and we are certainly quite proud of that work, and we're happy that these actions will allow us to do it better than we were doing it before. And we wanted to say thank you to the commission for leading us in this effort and allowing us to better able to provide these services. So thank you. This final item is a board order, again, as the governing body of Water Environment Services, the regional service provider, that says that the previous actions you took as the governing body of CCSD One and the other districts is affirmed. You're receiving the obligation, as, you know, CCSD One said, we agree that Wes can take it over. This is you, as Wes saying, we agree we will take it over and be responsible for the payment of the debts for these bonds, because we're certainly going to honor all the obligations that are outstanding, and be able to perform the good work of Wes going forward.
That's okay. Ken, you had a question or comment?
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman. I reiterate your comment about the, the mission of Wes, which is to make sure that we have clean water, which they do a fine job of, but there's another aspect of this, I think is always of concern to ratepayers and taxpayers, and that is, are we doing it as fiscally responsibly and fiscally efficiently as possible? And this accomplishes that goal, and again, I think staff should be commended for the work that they did, and that the previous board should be commended for the stand that they took at a very controversial time on a very controversial issue to make sure that this happened. Thank you.
Okay, with that, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the board order accepting substitution for Clackamas County Service District Number One with respect to certain borrowings.
Second?
It's moved in second that we approve a board order accepting substitution for Clackamas County Service District Number One with respect to certain borrowing. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you very much, it's been very nice seeing you this morning.
We'll send you the bill.
Thank you. Good job.
I'd like to announce that the board will adjourn as Water Environmental Services and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of the items, and ask the clerk to read the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On today's consent agenda, under Health, Housing and Human Services, we have approval of a revenue agreement with the State of Oregon, acting by and through its Oregon Health Authority for the reproductive health program, approval of a renewal of a revenue intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas County Community Corrections to provide behavioral health services to Community Corrections consumers, approval of a professional, technical and personal service contract with Cascadia Behavioral Healthcare, Inc., for supported employment services for health share Medicaid residents of Clackamas County, approval of amendment number two to an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon Department of Consumer and Business Services, Senior Health Insurance Benefits Assistance, approval of amendment number one to the intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon Department of Consumer and Business Services, Oregon Insurance Division, Senior Health Insurance Benefits Assistance, Senior Medicare Patrol, approval of amendment number two to the intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon Department of Human Services Aging and People with Disabilities Division for the provision of services to Clackamas County residents age sixteen over, approval of amendment number two to the intergovernmental subrecipient agreement with Canby Adult Center to provide social services for Clackamas County residents age sixteen over, approval of amendment number two to the agency's subrecipient agreement with Friends of the Essicata Community Center to provide social services for Clackamas County residents age sixteen over, approval of amendment number three to the intergovernmental subrecipient agreement with Foothills Community Church Malala Adult Community Center to provide social services for Clackamas County residents age sixteen over, approval of an intergovernmental subrecipient agreement, amendment number two, with the City of Gladstone, Gladstone Senior Center, to provide social services for Clackamas County residents age sixteen over, approval of amendment number one to an agency's service agreement with the Inn for Transitional Shelter and Home, Host Home Services, approval of amendment number two to the intergovernmental subrecipient agreement with the City of Oregon City Pioneer Community Center to provide social services for Clackamas County residents age sixteen over, approval of amendment number two to the intergovernmental subrecipient agreement with the City of Wilsonville, Wilsonville Community Center, to provide social services for Clackamas County residents age sixteen over, approval of a local grant agreement with Children's Center for Child Abuse Medical Assessments, approval of a service agreement with RX Strategies partnering with Clackamas County Health Centers Division for Third Party Administration of 3040B Claims Management of Pharmacy Services. Under our Department of Transportation Development, approval of a resolution recognizing the preferred bridge location of the French Prairie Bicycle Pedestrian Emergency Access Bridge under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes, under Tourism and Cultural Affairs, approval of an amendment to the lease with Blackhawk LLC for Clackamas County Tourism and Cultural Affairs Office Space, under Disaster Management, approval to apply for the fiscal year 2018 Emergency Management Performance Grant between Clackamas County and the State of Oregon, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Portland and Clackamas County for purchase and reimbursement activities related to the use of the fiscal year 2017 United States Department of Homeland Security's Urban Area Security Initiative Grant Program, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County and the City of Lake Oswego for the activation of the Clackamas County Emergency Notification System, approval of a research service agreement number two six one seven eight with the University of Oregon, approval of an agreement with Everbridge, Inc., for the purchase of an emergency community notification system, under Community Corrections, approval to apply for a grant award with the U.S. Department of Justice to establish alternatives to incarceration for individuals with opioid use disorders, under the Development Agency, approval of disposition agreement with Bottling Group LLC, and underwater environment services amendment number three to the contract documents between Clackamas County Service District Number One and Brown and Caldwell for on-call surface water technical services, approval of amendment number three to the contract documents between Clackamas County Service District Number One and OTAC, Inc., for on-call surface water technical services, approval of amendment number three to the contract documents between Clackamas County Service District Number One and Parametrics for on-call surface water technical services, approval of amendment number three to the contract documents between Clackamas County Service District Number One and Waterways Consulting for on-call surface water technical services, approval of a public improvement contract between Clackamas County Service District Number One and Kennedy Jinks Consultants, Inc., approval of amendment number three to the contract documents between Surface Water Management Agency of Clackamas County and Brown and Caldwell for on-call surface water technical services, approval of amendment number three to the contract documents between Surface Water Management Agency of Clackamas County and OTAC for on-call surface water technical services, approval of amendment number three to the contract documents between Surface Water Management Agency of Clackamas County and Parametrics for on-call surface water technical services, approval of amendment number three to the contract documents between Surface Management Agency of Clackamas County and Waterways Consulting for on-call surface water technical services, approval of a public improvement contract between Water Environment Services and Kennedy Jinks Consultants, Inc., and finally, approval of a contract with Brown and Caldwell, Inc., for the Wes sanitary sewer and stormwater rules and standard updates, and that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Kevin. I almost fell asleep. I almost fell asleep.
Actually, I was hoping he could repeat that.
So, with that, do any Commissioners wish to remove or pull an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, go ahead, Paul.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Moved in second that we approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? I just would like to note that there was a slight contract adjustment that I'd like to talk about with Don about future changes such as that, that he may do on his own, maybe limit the dollar amount, because, not that it takes a lot of time, but it, I mean, takes a lot of our time, but it can take less time and be more efficient to just have Don do that. Anyway, that's one thing we're going to bring up for issues in the future. We do not have issues or business meetings or
Yes, next week.
...policy sessions for a few weeks because we're going into budget. So first I had Ken.
Briefly, just wanted to point out in the resolution regarding the French Prairie Bicycle Pedestrian Emergency Access Bridge, that if you read the resolution, I just don't want this to slip by people, that while W. one is the preferred alignment as they go forward in the future examining this and figuring out how to do it, that could vary. So that's not absolutely 100% locked in, but I just think the public should be aware that that language is there. And that's all I have.
Besides the fact that there may never be money to do the project.
That's a whole other issue.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chair Bernard. I just wanted to mention that in this consent agenda is some services for older Americans, Meals on Wheels, and I am going to be missing our Commissioner communication because I have to race out of here to get to Women in Business Chamber Luncheon that I'm speaking at, but I just wanted to take this opportunity to talk about Ask the Question. These were handed to us as in preparation for our presentation by our Behavioral Health. And just a quick story, we, I participated in the Naomi Walk, which was pretty incredible. That's the National Alliance for Mentally Ill. They do a walk every year. Lot of folks go out and they raise awareness. We had our signs that we walked with that said Ask the Question. And on the path of our journey around the Willamette River and the bridges, people would yell out, "Well, what's the question?" So I just wanted to take a moment to say, "The question is, how are you?" And really mean it when you're talking to someone who looks like they're in distress. And don't be afraid to dig a little deeper. And when somebody says, "Oh, I'm not doing so good," well, just tell me about that. Dig a little deeper, dig a little deeper to get to the place of you asked the question, have you thought about hurting yourself? And wait for the answer, and then ask a really hard question, which is, do you have a plan? And that is the point, when someone has a plan, that they are going to hurt themselves, that it's really good for us to get folks connected to a crisis line, to get them connected to mental health, and we have excellent triage services in Clackamas County that I'm really proud of. So, sorry to hijack the consent agenda comments, but I've got to race out of here, and I just wanted to leave with those thoughts because it's very important as we think about mental health and think about the safety and security of our residents. So with that, I adjourn.
That was useful.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, we got a vote on this, though.
Oh, okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Nancy, for hanging around all this time. And now we're on to county administrator updates.
Thank you. I've just got a couple of items. One, I wanted to let you know that the City of Malala just got a whole lot greener. They have made significant changes like recycling improvements and replacing styrofoam plates with washable plates. All three city public schools have also earned certification from the nonprofit Oregon Grain Schools, and these certifications are facilitated through the staff in our Resource Conservation and Solid Waste Division within our Transportation and Development Department. I just wanted to give congratulations to the committed students and staff at Malala Elementary, Malala River Middle, and Malala High Schools. And I also wanted to thank the county staff who've been involved with that. And I wanted to let you know that we had last week nearly 100 volunteers turn out to pick up about 960 pounds of trash from the Three Creeks Natural Area. This cleanup event was sponsored by the environmental nonprofit known as Solve, and they do this work in partnership with our Water Environment Services Department. This event, it's part of the Summer Water Week Cleanup Series, and it's the first of some 25 to 30 cleanups that will happen over the next three months throughout the region. I wanted to express my appreciation to the Wes staff for their ongoing support for this project. And then also wanted to let folks know that Tuesday evening, KATU hosted a town hall conversation on youth mental health. This was a televised event. It was packed with students, parents, teachers, and others to share their stories related to mental illness. Among the expert panelists was Gally Murray, who is our own Suicide Prevention Coordinator here at Clackamas County, working with Health, Housing and Human Services, and she represented us very well with the program. Just wanted to thank Gally for that and other H3S staff for their work on this difficult and challenging issue. Then I want to make sure folks know that over the course of the next week, two weeks actually, between May 29th and June 6th, we will be holding budget committee meetings, and we will not have policy session meetings or our regular business meetings. The public can view our budget and the schedule at www.clackamas.us/budget, and I just want to invite the public to attend any and all of these budget committee meetings. We will have an opportunity to receive public comment on Thursday, May 31st at 5:30 p.m. in the Development Services Building, first floor auditorium. And I have two other items I was just going to quickly share with you. This seems like it's a Water Environment Services Day here with this board, but I did receive from the Government Finance Officers Association two letters, basically acknowledging that the Tri-City Service District and the Clackamas County Service District Number One each earned and qualified for GFOA's Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. So, great job on the part of our Wes staff for that work. And that's it.
Hey, look at that. Camera guy waited till I got back to my seat. Thank you. One question, and you might be able to answer this. I don't know that you'll be able to answer this today. You said 950 pounds of trash.
Yes.
Do we have a homeless issue down there? Homeless? I've not known that, but that seems like a lot.
We can ask about that and find out what folks believe the source of that trash might be.
Yeah, because that is a park. It's part of the Parks District. And I also, that was Chris Story. Is that the project he did the other day?
I'm not sure.
I know that's a Wes.
With the T-shirt on and everything? Probably so, yeah.
I'd be interested knowing if we've had a problem with homeless camps.
Yeah, we'll check into it.
Okay. And let me see. Now we're on to county Commissioner Communication, and Ken, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Don, would you see to it that the Malala, the Malala School District one and the Solve one are forwarded to my email?
Excuse me again?
Would you see to it that the Malala School District thing that you reported on and the Solve thing that you reported on are forwarded to my email?
I will do that for you, yes.
Thank you very much. This week, we attended the Watershed Celebration, the Salmon Celebration, the Rody Community Planning Organization Luncheon, or excuse me, Breakfast, the Homeless Solutions Coalition Community Meeting, and Homelessness Task Force. And I read those specifically that way because all of those are organizations of volunteers that help our county. And once again, it shows you that without those folks, the resources that Clackamas County brings to bear would be severely limited. They really make our, our, our resources go a lot further, and they should be commended for that. And then the only other one is that I did attend the Pacific Northwest Defense Coalition Luncheon to continue to maintain a positive working relationship with our business community. And I will leave it at that today. Thank you. And I do have the dog. Yes. Thank you, Kevin. This is, no, not up yet. There we go. This is Charlie. He is currently small in stature, but he has a lot to say. He has been at the shelter for a few weeks, and staff there has started teaching him some basic commands such as sit, watch me, and he is even learning down. He will need a home that has children over the age of 13, as he is still a growing fellow, and additional training will help him and his new family bond. He is ready for you to meet him. Stop by the shelter today. For more information about Charlie and other adoptable dogs, please contact Clackamas County Dog Services at 503-655-8628, or www.clackamas.us/dogs.
Great, thank you. Paul?
Well, last week I was at some regional meetings, and I repeated or renewed my request for a regional dialogue amongst the cities in the region, in the urban area particularly, which is about 25 cities, and county, county and other regional leaders, and really discussed the regional transportation plan. It's really, I think it's essential that we do that, and we've had four large meetings. We have not really had a, a meeting in which the elected leaders could actually sit amongst one another and discuss some of our needs around the region, so we can better understand all of our individual needs. And it just seems incumbent upon the region to do that in light of the congestion, in light of the growing population and the needs we have out there. It's been, there was one meeting in which really it was a lot of the other interest with, whether it was transportation for senior groups, or whether it was environmental concerns or bike ped interest. There was an exclusive meeting for, for those folks, but we need to have, I think, an inclusive meeting for all the jurisdictions. And it's a lot to represent as one Commissioner, maybe all the cities at times at the tolling meetings or at the transit meetings, and I know that even for the city's rep at the JPAC table to represent those cities, it is a challenge and it's a lot of responsibility, but there's often, frankly, not the time to adequately do that. And the agenda is dominated with other issues and not really the needs that we have. We have formed the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee about 18 years ago, and it's a really valuable tool for us to communicate amongst one another. And we've been, we meet monthly, and it, it really serves that role in Clackamas County, and Washington County has actually been at it longer than we have. And they also do that. And I know that recently there's been some discussion about, you know, maybe that should look differently or not exist. And I, I've certainly heard in the last couple, three days, how important that is, including last night, throughout the day yesterday, that we have really the need to organize and discuss amongst one another the needs of the county and the region. And right now, as I focus really on the, on the county, in light of the needs of the park districts, whether it's the North Clackamas Parks Recreation District and the parties to that, but I certainly heard in the, in the last three months of being out there, going door to door, going to community meetings, and again, in the last couple evenings, going to some community meetings, how, how the feeling of where we're serving our folks well and where we're not really serving our folks very well, the underserved, the severely underserved areas as it relates to parks. And I'm certainly hearing a lot of strong feedback about how we should tackle or move forward. And I know right now the path towards resolution on the Parks District is not as crystal clear as it ought to be. You know, we have some challenges, but I think those folks want those voices and want to have representation, however that is done, that we, we look at that in a more fair, equitable way. But we'll, I know we'll be tackling that. And I think the, the theme here today for me is more about, I mean, we, half our county is unincorporated, and we have to recognize that those folks rely upon the five Board of County Commissioners to represent them at all these different tables. And I think we've got to figure out a way to get better representation for those groups, for those folks, to make sure that they're recognized. So, that's all I have for today, Chair.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Clackamas Service Center, which had a major fire and has been closed for quite some time, will be opening June 9th, and they've been a valuable partner, providing services to those in great need. And I actually want to mention a little bit about the Parks District. You mentioned it's not quite resolved. Well, it isn't resolved, and I think you're going to be hearing a lot about this. You know, Clack, North Clackamas Parks is dedicated to providing services to a number of cities and unincorporated areas in Clackamas County. There's been an issue between Happy Valley and ourselves. We thought we were, well, I'd say, I don't think we've, thought we were coming to some resolution on it. We still have a lot to go. But a recent communication with the Department of Revenue may indicate further issues need to be resolved. So, I, I hope that we can resolve this like we did with, with Gladstone, like we've done with Stafford, like we've done with the Fair Board. I guess, Ken, this is the next issue, isn't it?
Yeah, it is.
It is. This is a big issue, and, and we'll work hard with our partners in Happy Valley to come to a joint agreement that will satisfy both of us and, most importantly, those members of the Parks District that are affected by this issue. So, I look forward to sitting down with the, the city council, and maybe that's the way we do this. Sit down with the city council and talk through this issue like we've done in every single one of these. I know Paul and Martha have reached out, made an effort. I've reached out. I'm sure you have too.
Actually, I've not been.
Maybe you're the guy.
Directly involved in this one.
Yeah. But, you know, our goal is to provide outstanding services as the board of the Parks, North Clackamas Parks District and the County Parks. One issue is that with the memo we just got, want to make sure that when we do reform that district, that the membership include Happy Valley. And I think what you mentioned is make sure that distribution is fair throughout the Parks District, because we are talking about reforming that committee. Anyway, also, you know, the Parks District itself is challenged with the rate that it currently applies. I think that's another discussion we have to have after this other issue is resolved, that we go to that board and again, discuss the rate. At the, at one point, that board had decided on a rate, and this board changed that, and it failed. But, so there's an opportunity to really sit down and work out a lot of these issues with other members of the community in Happy Valley, Milwaukee, unincorporate Clackamas County, and come up with a solution we can all be happy with. So, with that, thank you, audience, for sticking through all this. There's nobody here. And with that, we'll adjourn. Thank you.